All right, we are good to go.
Okay, this is the Business and Community Affairs Committee meeting today, Thursday, May 6, 2021. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I believe the only item on our agenda today is Resolution R-1920-125, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, establishing procedures allowing building permit fees charged pursuant to Section 5-104 of the Norman City Code to be adjusted and satisfied as an incentive for residential homes, achieving certain home energy rating system, HERS Energy Rating Index, ERi scores, and completion of the pilot program established in Resolution R-1718-117 through June 30, 2021. And I believe we have a presentation.
We do. Good afternoon. I'm going to introduce Brenda Wolf, our Permit Services Supervisor, as well as Greg Clark, Development Services Manager. And they are actually taking on the, carrying the bucket, so to speak, for the program that Mr. Floyd started several years ago in conjunction with what Dr. Evenson is looking at as well. It's the whole scope of energy conservation and such. So I'll let Brenda and Greg take this and let them tell you where they are today with what we need to do moving forward. Brenda, you're muted.
Thank you, Jane. Sorry about that.
Okay.
I'm Brenda Wolf, Permit Services Supervisor, and we're going to talk today about the Home Energy Program. Between myself and Greg Clark, we're going to discuss the history of the program, just briefly, the history of the program, participation in the program that we've had thus far, or actually through March 31st. We're looking at the timeline from the beginning, which was July of 2018 through March 31st. Then we're going to give you some information about the current codes, current energy code activity, followed by some staff recommendations on the item. So I'll start with some history of the program. There was some discussion on the energy efficient homes that began in 2017 into 2018. At that time, I think staff met with builders and stakeholders to discuss potential incentives. Out of that came the HERS ERi Pilot Program, which again was created to encourage energy efficient residential home construction by offering credits to builders who build above residential code minimums. And again, I'll repeat, the start of the program was July 1 of 2018. It's been renewed four times, and it is actually set to expire June 30 of 2021. Just to give you some history of the program in regards to participation, to date, or up to March 31st, excuse me, from July 1 of 2018 through July 31 of 2021, we've had 482 applicants that applied to the HERS ERi Program. Four, or excuse me, 67 of those withdrew from the program. Most of those withdrew because they weren't quite ready for CO, and so their home was not quite finished yet, and so they could not qualify for the program. So they withdrew, which means they went back and paid permit fees at the end of the program and withdrew from the program. 284 homes completed the program and received CO. There are currently 131, again, as of March 31st, 131 applicants that remain enrolled in the program. Of those, we have 157 that paid a percentage of permit fees, meaning that they received partial credit. What that means is they did not hit the full mark of 55 to get all of the credit. They may have received a 65 or 64, or somewhere in there, anywhere above 55. They did not get full credit. 127 of the applicants received full benefit, meaning they did not pay any permit fees at all. Basically, they achieved a HERS rating of 55 or less. Now, in these cases, what we did is we started from the time of application. Folks would apply to the HERS program at the time they applied for building permit. That was letting city staff know that they wanted to be part of the program. It's not mandatory by any means, but if folks wanted to apply, they could apply. 127 of those did not pay building permit fee at all, so they had really good scores of 55 or less. So in all, we've had about $90,000 in fees that were not paid by applicants. So if you want to call it credited, they were not paid, basically. They, that's what the totals come to for those homes.
Thank you, Brenda. My name is Greg Clark. I am Development Services Manager. I'll be talking a little bit about kind of where the status of energy codes are, you know, regionally and both in the state of Oklahoma. And to do that, I'm going to give you a little background. The state of Oklahoma is governed by a state adopted minimum code. And the body that does that is the Oklahoma Uniform Building Code Commission. And when they adopt a code for the state, it becomes a minimum for all jurisdictions in the state. And so we, we in turn really do follow their lead when they go for code adoptions, for the most part. So this could be, and these are building codes. So this would apply to building, construction, electrical work, mechanical work, plumbing work, and also energy codes. You know, for a long time at the state level, this body has only existed for, I think, it's about 10 years now, give or take. And they've had about three different code cycles. They've been pretty apprehensive in the past about doing much in the way of adopting energy codes. You know, they've kind of acknowledged it, but they really hadn't advanced the codes. They would often just roll it back and keep it to a much lesser standard, if you will. You know, I have served on a couple of those boards and have pushed or advocated for energy, sometimes successful, oftentimes not. Recently, in 2018, excuse me, reviewing the 2018 codes last year, there was a large push by a bunch of energy code advocates to try to get them to update the energy code. It wasn't really successful in the sense that they didn't make an immediate change. But what they did actually agree to do, which was somewhat of a monumental change, if you follow energy codes in the state, was to create a technical committee that would review the energy codes. And this technical committee is actually stacked, and they have, they'll have their first meeting here, May the 12th. I won't go real deep into the weeds with you about the process, but briefly, the way the state adopts codes is it starts off with a technical committee, and they review a code. And when they, this technical committee, and it usually takes two, three, four meetings, depending on the topic, sometimes more, sometimes less. So anyway, the technical comedian will review the code, will make a recommendation. There's a board that receives a recommendation, and then that board will either, you know, agree with the findings of the technical committee, or they could reject it, although generally speaking, in the past, has been few and far between. And then, once it makes it through the board, whatever is approved by the board goes to the legislator for their consideration. And if the legislator acts on it, it becomes effective as law. If they do not act on it, it goes to the governor. And if he, you know, in this case, he would have the ability to act on it as law. So the process, it may actually sound worse than what it is. This technical committee is meeting now. It's likely that the recommendations would ultimately be accepted, meaning probably in the spring of 2022 would be in the earliest, the statewide minimum standard for energy code for both commercial and residential could be potentially updated. And so that's kind of a timeline that's working right now, you know, rather independent of us here in the city of Norman. But it certainly affects, it certainly affects a lot of what we do or don't do with energy code. So we'll be following that very intently. A little bit about just what these numbers mean. Brenda was talking about some of these numbers, and just to give you a little background, the term HERS and ERi, they're basically like a score for a home, like how energy efficient is. And the baseline, or the highest score you see on there, the 100, is based on the 2006 year code. And it's 100, meaning, you know, if you build through that, you build to 100. And you'll notice that the more efficient the home is, the lower the number is. And you, the codes are updated about every three years, and so you see 2006, 9, 12, and subsequent. And so you can kind of see the year by year change. And generally, for the most part, from a year, three-year cycle to three-year cycle, it, the code improves. You can also see in there that 65, that is the current benchmark that was set for the HERS ERi Program. And when I say HERS and ERi, they're essentially just, they're the same thing. So if I use them interchangeably, just know they're essentially the same thing. Energy Rating Index is what ERi stands for. Anyways, our program was based around a 65, which you can see shows that it's a better, you know, it was an improvement over the 2012 code. The state, the state code is actually debatable amongst energy gurus what our ERi score would be. It would certainly be no less, the current state minimum would be no less than an 80, although most energy folks think is probably somewhere between the 70 and 80 range. But it's kind of a difficult evaluation because the code for the state was highly customized from its original publisher. Currently, the, this Energy Code Technical Committee is viewing the 2015 energy codes for single family and commercial. And that, that score has an ERi of 51. So you can see from year to year, it's, you know, this code, this 2015 code is notably more efficient home being built here, you know, almost, yeah, almost twice what the value of what the 2006 cycle was. Just carrying it forward for a little bit, in 2018, there's one of the few rollbacks, if you will, where the code ERi was raised up, but then it was promptly in the 21 edition brought back down to the 51. And that's, that's currently where it sits. Just to give you a little idea about what some of our neighboring states do with statewide adoptions, Texas has a statewide minimum code, and that's the only reason I brought it up, you know, their border. But they also are governed by a state minimum mandate. You'll see the yellow highlight there. We're in what CZ3 means, we're in Climate Zone 3. There's all these climate zones. If you look at maps, it starts on the southern part of the United States, it's Climate Zone 1. And you, I forget the furthest one when you go north up to Alaska, but the numbers gradually increase. And the standards kind of, you know, change for, you know, what you do in Alaska is not what you're going to do in South Texas, certainly. So we're in Climate Zone 3, which is what most of Texas is, and that's certainly what Norman is. And you can see their ERi scores. They've been, they were governed for a good many years by the benchmark that we were awarding credits of, the 65. Currently, they lowered that standard to, in 2019, to the 63. And then, come September of 2022, they're going to actually lower their, you know, their, lower the ERi to a 59. So you, you can see that they wrote in their state law provisions to kind of have this gradual ramp of improvement from year to year, which, which is important. And those are minimums. There's no credits given for any of those considerations. That's just what a builder in the Texas area would have to achieve just to meet the code. So, you know, we had, we had some discussions about what, what should be the, the status of the program. It's been renewed, like Brenda said, four times. And so currently, we're staring at it now, do we renew it if you have time? Or just what, what would be some of our options? And we proposed two, of course, there's other paths to be taken, but these were two options that we thought. And option number one was let the program expire. And the reason why the state's code update should occur, allowing a better decision to be made with regard to what a future program benchmark would be, you know, if we wanted to pick it back up and continue. And with a lot of uncertainty about what the state would do with their, the code and a benchmark they might put in there, if they adopted the 51, just straight out of the book that they were adopting, or if they modified it and raised it up to a 59, we don't know, frankly, is the honest answer. There's a number of variables that will play into that process. But, you know, with, with that uncertainty, we just thought it might be the time to also just sit back, collect the data. I think we have another 130 applicants currently in the program right now. You know, if we pump the brakes for the time being, we'll be able to collect all that data as well, assess it, come up with, you know, and just, you know, study it a little bit and come up with an idea of what, you know, what homes were doing, you know, you know, with this, this, you know, fairly, fairly, you know, notable, but not, you know, elaborate incentive that we gave. And another, another reason we might consider, and we're not sure of this either, but there is a visibility incentive program that is being considered by the city as well. And that, that will affect it as well. So if we were to continue the HERS program and a credit, and we enacted a visitability incentive program, you know, generally, they would pull from the same pot, that, that could be a little bit of a concern. So by pumping the brakes now, we would allow, you know, the considerations of the other committees that are wanting to explore that program, just see, see if they could put in place. And we wouldn't have any conflicting provisions about incentive. And visitability, if you're curious, is, is kind of an extension or idea that relates to accessibility for new single-family homes. So they're not fully compliant for all the accessibility needs, but they're at least incentivizing folks to build homes where a bit, you know, an accessible person could come, come in, come to the home, visit it, use the facilities, and not, you know, be challenged with lots of steps or narrow surfaces or potentially other pitfalls that would make things difficult for them. So that was an option. Another option we had was, well, okay, you know, we want to keep the program growing, but we, you know, we're, we're thinking in the back of our minds, what's going on with the state? So the, an idea would be to raise the benchmark ERi. You know, we thought the 51 seemed like a pretty good idea to raise it to, simply because that is what the state, the state technical committee is reviewing. It seems very, very unlikely that they would come up with a code or a benchmark that would be, you know, better than that. So we wouldn't have a scenario where we adopted an incentive program, and then the state adopted a, you know, a higher standard, if you will. So we would certainly avoid, or most likely, avoid the conflict there. And also, it does seem that, you know, with the program passing, it was inception in 2018, it's been, you know, three years that, you know, you want to step these programs forward. That's kind of the way energy code compliance is viewed, is just, you know, to slowly increase efficiency over time in a, in a gradual way. And so with, with, with that stepping up the benchmark, you know, it, it just seems like that would be something we'd want to do if we were to make this a permanent program anyway, is to revisit the standard, you know, at least in some time frame. And another, another thought that has been paramount with me on the program is if we're going to continue it this time, would be to hopefully benchmark some monies to study the program and evaluate. You know, one of the questions I've heard many times is, okay, we have an incentive program. We're rewarding folks for building these homes to these scores, but there really isn't a benchmark. Most, most folks that come up with incentive programs, be it utility companies, states, federal, they, they do benchmarking studies. And what they do is they go into, you know, they take samples in a given area to try to determine, okay, well, what are people really building, you know, in this market today to help give, give an idea of where we really should benchmark it? You know, no one really knows exactly what a home, what is a home that is not in the, the program? What are, what are they scoring? Are they also scoring 65s and 64s and what have you? Or are they notably worse? So if we were to keep it going, I do think it would be prudent to consider doing some sample testings of how homes not in the program to help us know what a good benchmark would be. And so we would want to look at that benchmark of the non, you know, non-program homes. And we'd look at, of course, at the state minimums, those minimums as well, to help make an educated decision where we thought we wanted to create the benchmark incentive. And so the last slide here is just kind of visually showing, you know, the current program today, how it is and how it pays out, if you had a question about that, versus what the option to proposal would be. So currently, we're paying out 50% of a person's permit fees if they build the home to a 65, and they're getting a full credit of their permit fees back if they build a home to a 55. With the option to scale, this is, it essentially reflects the same thing, but they would get 50% credit if they went, if they scored a 51, and they would get a full credit if they scored a 41. I thank you all for, you know, one volunteering and taking your time every day to listen to us. And we're certainly happy to answer any questions or, you know, help in any way we can about several of the thoughts we presented today.
Okay, and thank you very much, Mr. Clark and Ms. Wolf, for your presentation today. And if you could return us to our full screen, because I can't see at the moment. If everybody, anybody has their hand raised, see if we have any questions or discussion. Mayor Clark.
My apologies, I'm driving, so I'm not even going to pretend to have my camera on. I think that...
You're cutting out for me, Mayor Clark, but I don't know about everybody else.
All right, can you hear me now?
Anybody, yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, what I was saying was, if we get rid of it, my fear is it won't come back. So I would rather increase the requirements and really, again, continue to encourage people to, to build in a way that builds leans into our sustainability goals and get rid of it.
Okay, is that any other comment? All right, Councilmember Nash.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to change the new minimum to 51, having that 41 to 51 range. Because with, as it is, the 45% of the, is the deal that have completed the program got the full benefit. Now, of course, as you're alluding to with the, the studies that should be done, we don't really know how much effort they're having to put into achieving that. If it's typical of, you know, current building standards to, you know, to get that kind of rating anyways or not, but yeah, I would think that we want to have a minimum, you know, a target that's kind of difficult to hit, just to incentivize people to go above and beyond what's simply easy to achieve. Then I agree with Mayor Clark. We shouldn't stop the program altogether, because there's that risk of it not coming back. But, yeah, I'm all for reducing, well, it's reducing the minimum, changing the minimum to the 41. Kind of weird describing it, since the lower the score, the better, but yeah, yeah, we should definitely raise the bar a little bit.
Any other comments that you would like to add, Councilmember Nash?
I think that covers it.
Okay, thank you. And I also agree, I don't see anybody else who has their hand raised. I think we're the only three councilmembers present today. I also agree, I know that anytime we start a new program or incentives, that it takes a long time to get those rolling to begin with. So I am definitely in favor of not, not choosing option one, but staying with option two and going ahead and raising. Or it is kind of confusing that the lower the number, the more stringent the requirements. But I know that prior councils worked really hard to get this program, and I realize that it's been a pilot program, and we've extended it multiple times. But I would definitely be in favor of continuing to pursue that. And I was really interested in your comments, Mr. Clark, about establishing some benchmarks and really trying to understand what the benefit of the incentives are. So what type of resources do you think it would take to study that a little further? What do you need?
So, and this, this wasn't an area of expertise for me, but I did some reach out and some reading on that. Most, most places that try to establish a long-term program, and there is some Department of Energy guidelines, and I will not pretend that I had the opportunity to study them, I just alluded to. But they'll take a sample size. The fellow I talked to who was, had been involved with similar benchmark studies, he estimated that for a market like Norman, they would take maybe as few as 50, as many as 100. And what they would do is they would go into the market. In this case, they would target homes that were not in the program. They generally would appeal to the builders or homeowners, whoever, whoever was building the property, and reach out to those folks and, you know, actively try to get them to allow simply testing of this home to occur, you know, you know, generally at no cost to them, kind of under the guise of education and outreach and, you know, partnership is kind of the motivation that the builder might allow their home to be tested, just seemingly out of the blue. And so they, they would test these homes, you know, they'd furnish the results to the builder. So they'd have that, and they'd get a full report about how they could learn about what, you know, you know, what were the reasons why they did well, or what were the reasons why they didn't do as well? And they would, you know, essentially establish a report, create, create a report that they'd furnish back to the folks who were interested in, in the benchmark in the first place. And that's generally, generally what they were. So what that would really look like is, there are a number of what they call energy raiders. And what, and that's how, that's how these companies are currently getting their ERi heard scores anyway, is they're hiring an energy raider. And so in our instance, if this is an option we did explore, we would have to probably come up with a request or proposal for an energy raider to, you know, one, solicit, and then two, go and test this sample of homes, and then provide feedback to us when it was done about that. And so, you know, the cost of it, you know, and of course, I wouldn't be able to pin the person down exactly on this, but the estimation was $500 to $700 per home is what it would take to get a sample of it. And it involves usually two or three workers that go on site to the home, and they have to spend... And it involves usually two or three workers that go on site to the home and they have to spend, uh, you know, a good chunk of their day with or testing equipment and they have to document it all and then prepare their report. So that's, that seems fairly in line with what I I would expect frankly. So, you know, the the short math on that, if we, if it was the five hundred dollars and it was fifty homes. You know, that would, that would be upwards of, you know, minimum probably twenty-five thousand dollars to to consider the.
I don't know about everybody else, but you're breaking up on me. Are we having audio problems with everybody else, or is it just me?
That one's yours.
Councilmember Hall, you keep freezing, so I think maybe you're having some connection problems on your side.
And so.
We just, hang on just one second, Greg, we lost her.
You're, you're muted now, there you go.
Okay, yeah, okay, is it just me or is everybody else having audio issues?
You, you've been freezing on us.
Okay, okay, um, how are we doing right now?
You're good now.
Okay, so I missed the last part of um, what Mr. Clark had to say.
Okay, I'm not sure where you, I cut off for you.
Um, you were right in the middle of when I asked you about what kind of resources it would take. And you had said approximately five to seven hundred per home.
Okay, so yeah.
That's where I lost you.
Fair, and I'll try to pick it right back up there. So yeah, the estimated cost was about five to seven hundred dollars per home.
Okay.
I kind of went into the procedure that, you know, of what, of what they do in these tests, which is the same methods, what they do for any of these homes that have an E R I score. It involves a couple of workmen, they have testing equipment, they seal off the home, they have to document all the equipment in the home. Uh, and over, you know, the, the B T U's, uh, how much consumption type equipment they have home. And they have software programs, they have to put it in and then report it back. And so the short thought of it is, if, if, if the benchmarking is sufficient with fifty homes, at the minimum cost of five hundred dollars for homes, it would potentially be twenty-five thousand dollars to get any form of benchmark. Um, you know, and I only bring it up, and it seems like a lot of money to me too frankly. But if, if we're going to do this program for, you know, years and years to come, I would think we would want to establish an initial benchmark. And then much like you saw with some of the Texas modeling, where they had this kind of scaling score, where they kind of wrote it into their ordinances or codes. Uh, that they, they allowed, and so they didn't have to come back every year to re-adopt it. They created this sliding scale of codes, which I thought was pretty clever. So if, if we were going to keep this, not just as a, an interim, and maybe the right answer today is just to keep it as an interim while we're letting the state sort out their business. But I wanted to plant the seed that long-term, uh, if we're going to do it as a permanent program, I definitely think, feel strongly that we would benefit from some benchmarking. And I, I have some homework to do on the benchmarking frankly, if that was an option you all decided to to pursue.
Okay, um, Councilmember Nash?
I was thinking a little bit more about the, the score, scoring thresholds. Uh, maybe we could widen the region of qualification for the program. If, uh, because if, if the minimum score or the entry score, say, I guess currently it's at a fifty five. Uh, or not sixty-five. Yeah, if that's too hard to achieve, then it's kind of going to disincentivize people to, to uh, even bother. If it's relatively easy to achieve, then um, more people participating in it. More than have the desire to, to perhaps do better, save a little bit more. But then the minimum, instead of being forty-one, if we make that um, a little bit harder to achieve. Right now, we've got five percent increments on each uh, rating. If we're to widen that to, oh, I guess thirty-one to fifty-five or maybe sixty-five. But have say like two percent per score. That way we can maximize people that can participate in it and uh, yeah, give them a kind of a better goal to shoot for, uh, for that full benefit. Uh, but, yes, that's kind of my opinion. I don't know if, if uh, if that'll have any effect on people participating or not. Um, I don't know how many people even look at the program and uh, design with the program in mind. But um, figuring that kind of information out with a study, I think would be prudent to, to really maximize the uh, design. Kind of optimize the design of the program.
And I could see widening it, you know, there was a stat that I, I thought maybe you all would be interested in. And so we're proposing moving that score to fifty-one. And we had, uh, actually had a, still had a fair amount of participants hit that fifty-one benchmark. As of today, we had eighty-six of the applicants scored a fifty-one or better, meaning that uh, I forget the overall number, but it was essentially thirty percent of the current uh, homes that were in the program would have still qualified for, for a credit. Uh, even, even at the fifty-one score. And so there, you know, and, and some of the things that make a difference in these programs that, you know, uh, you know, just the difference between putting a normal water heater in versus a tankless water heater in, uh, can really, can really affect the scores. So I mean, if somebody was still wanting to be in the program and they wanted to get the credit, they, they could, you know, very, they could shave a lot of points off the score. If they were putting in the old tankless, the tank style and just went with a higher efficiency, they could potentially still, you know, apply, qualify for, you know, potentially a, quite a bit of the benefits, if not all of it, just by making some improvements like that. But certainly by raising the benchmark, uh, it may, it may not affect the participation, I hope. I would, I would be guessing there.
So, since we've extended uh, the deadline several times and we have another um, deadline or sunset date, I guess, coming up. Um, have we seen more, I mean, is, is, is there interest in the program? Are we seeing more interest as people become more familiar with it? Um, and is the incentive, um, you know, I guess robust enough where they're interested in, in going through the process? And do you see this as something that has gained more interest as we've gone along? Or do you have a sense of that? Because I think the number in the staff report was thirty-five percent of the app, of the building permit applicants were choosing to go this route. So I was just interested in any feedback you had about that.
And Brenda might actually be a better source here. I mean, I, I'll say this kind of from an almond spot. It, it does seem like, you know, from its initial rollout to later, there's a lot of the same names. But uh, as it went along, we did start to see some more and more. Uh, and I will say, and again, this is just going to add almond evidence, uh, and I, I inspected work for many, many years for the city. Uh, I, one of the things that you can't put pen to paper, and I started to see some of the concepts that builders who were in the program doing more readily spill over into other people, uh, which was a, again, that was just a secondary benefit that you, you wouldn't have had. And so it wasn't, you know, the workmen, you know, they're used to doing things away and they get approved this way. So, and, and, you know, generally, once one person does it, then more do it. Um, so I couldn't, I'll be honest, I can't, couldn't tell you if the number of people have, you know, ramped up or if it's been pretty steady. Uh, I don't know that we put dates on all, I'm sure we have dates on it, but that wasn't an assessment we ran frankly.
Well, and I, I, I guess my, you know, anecdotally, just that more and more people are, are interested in maybe um, using, you know, better and better methods of construction that are more energy efficient. I mean, that's the whole benefit of having a program like this to meet some of the sustainability goals that we do have. And so um, you know, for me, everything that we've talked about really doesn't um, change where I started to begin with, which is, you know, pursuing the option two. And um, I don't know, um, Mr. Pyle, what you think about the um, resources? And, you know, when that might come into play, um, and how we might work that into it. But um, I think that's something that we might want to think about as time goes by. And, you know, perhaps because we're looking at, uh, I think you said it was September twenty-twenty-two, when we might get um, more information on what that number is. I mean, I don't have any problem with trying to, you know, hit that fifty-one for now and continuing it in a incremental way like we have been. So, uh, Councilmember Nash.
There, there has been some progress made and, and as, as Greg had mentioned, you know, several applications come through. And we've got a lot of builders who see the value of uh, being able to market their product as being that energy efficient. A couple of builders, uh, when you go into their model homes, they'll, they'll hand you all of their energy scores right up front, and it is kind of a big deal. I think, uh, you know, while we're waiting for what that, that next set of numbers may look like, you know, a conscious public education campaign on our part. Um, even, you know, highlighting things on our website and touching base with, um, on a lease about, you know, how, how might we market the benefits um, and share that more? Um, the building community understands it. I, a lot of homebuyers may or may not. I think it, you know, it's shiny and sexy when you walk into the sales office, but there may be an opportunity to help uh, educate the members of the public just so they understand what it is they're looking at and what those values are in the overall cost of ownership in a home. So uh, there's a lot of value and a lot of great information that uh, Greg and Brenda and Jane are aware of that I think we could probably do a better, a job sharing that with the community.
Ms. Hudson?
Just, uh, Councilmember Hall, I think you asked the question, I'm sorry, maybe it was, uh, Councilmember Nash. Uh, so I was just pulling up the numbers real quick. In twenty-twenty, year-to-date, uh, for residential new construction, we had five hundred and thirty-seven permits. And just real quick, doing the, the numbers, I believe we, that, that adds up to about a hundred and fifty of these applications are coming in annually. Brenda, what was it? I don't have the PowerPoint, four hundred and thirty-eight or something like that?
Total of applicants was four eighty-two, so we're pushing, we may be at five hundred right now, because this number stopped as of May thirty-first. We did our PowerPoint through May thirty-first with that data.
So a hundred and sixty-one so far. Uh, so that would, I mean, if you just run the numbers, it'd be about a hundred and sixty-one annually in comparison to five hundred and thirty-seven uh, permits.
Okay.
Twenty percent, not bad.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm encouraged and I definitely want to continue the program. Um, so Councilmember Nash, did you have any more comments? Can't tell if your hand was raised or not.
Uh, no, I think, thinking about it covers it.
Okay, great.
I, I only had one more thing to add and just to set some expectations. So if we do move forward with the fifty-one, that is, that is a jump. Like I said, as of the time we ran the numbers the other day, only thirty percent of the homes would have qualified. So I do think it's, it's important to note that the number of applicants that uh, would probably receive credit would probably go down. But I think what we'll see is also our H O R S score, we're going to start seeing some H O R S scores hitting territories in areas we're not used to. And I think that's very important, because that, again, we don't, you know, uh, these are all great numbers and all that, but they are just numbers. And they're, they're theoretical until somebody actually can execute them. So uh, even though we may, you know, there, there may be, you know, this phase of the program, the pilot program, may produce a, a lower volume. I, I think it's, I don't think anyone should be discouraged if that's the case, because that, that is, that, that, that'll help pave the way to a permanent program where we can get a good benchmark and we, we can really understand what, you know, what, what is, you know, what can be achieved in the market currently and just help build this data source. And I just wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, yes, it, it may, it may, it may lower the overall number of applicants. But I don't, that wouldn't be something that would discourage me myself.
Okay, so you're comfortable moving forward with that lower number, since that's what the state's moving towards as well?
I mean, it's with all the unknowns with, at the state level, uh, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's a safe number, I'll say that. The number could be higher, and you know, someone would argue that it will make it, you know, X or Y, a sixty or a fifty-five or something else. And there, there'd be a spirited discussion about uh, what it, it could or should be. And I, I will, I, I will say fifty-one is, is, you know, with only thirty percent of the homes hitting the credit there, that it will be a, it will be more of a challenge. It'll, it's going to take more of a deliberate effort on some of the building communities that are part of it. We're still going to have participation, uh, I can promise you that. Uh, there's a number of builders who frankly would uh, are, are in similar programs that aren't incentivized at all. So there's, so we're, we're still going to get participation, I think, it's just a question of, will we see, uh, you know, an overall uh, large jump to, to follow it? I'm, I'm hopeful we will.
Okay, um, Ms. Wolf?
I was just going to circle back to the question about how many participants or who, how many, what number of builders? And from the beginning of the program, I don't think we've added very many builders at all. We started with a certain number, there are two main builder, building contractors. Um, aside from those, there are five or six, otherwise we've really not added to the program. People are, we want them to apply, but we don't necessarily advertise or talk about it necessarily. So um, so that's, that's one point. And then to jump on what Greg just said. Um, I do think that participation will slow down, but that's not a bad thing, like he was stating. I've seen scores as low as forty-two um, by one builder consecutively. Um, I've seen scores as high as seventy, um, which then just kind of takes somebody completely out of the program. So those are evaluated as they come in on a daily basis. These, these are a lot, um, the reporting and all the business to do with it. But um, I just wanted you to realize that there are not that many builders really participating in the program. There are a set half dozen with two of those being the main, if that's helpful at all.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. Thanks for, thanks for your comments. I, yeah, I, I, I just think, you know, we build slowly and encourage um, anyone that we can. And I liked your idea too, Mr. Pyle, about, you know, maybe we need to do a better job of helping our building community understand the incentives that they do get. So, and Mayor Clark?
Quick comment on that, we should be advertising this if we actually are trying to affect change. And I know that I have touched on this with, in other meetings, I'd love to see our quarterly or every other month meetings with HOAs and builders. And this is exactly the kind of material we could have on an agenda frankly, so, uh, yeah, let's, let's make that happen.
Okay, appreciate those comments, yeah. And um, in regards to, you also touched on visibility incentives. And I certainly don't see these as mutually exclusive. And I'm hoping that, um, you know, we should be, I think we're planning on talking about moving forward with the visibility ordinance sometime soon. Um, so definitely want to um, keep moving ahead with that as well. Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, I bet we could increase participation if we triple all the permit fees.
Uh, okay. Thank you. Um, any other comments? Okay, so um, staff, I guess I want to check in and see if you have enough direction on um, moving forward. I think, you know, those of us that are here definitely want to pursue option two. And um, you know, if we want to start collecting more information on what kind of resources we would need to do a study, then we can circle back and do that. And I'm assuming um, we're going to have to do something to extend the uh, date since it's expiring on June thirtieth, is that correct?
I'm gonna let Beth Macala jump in here.
Okay.
Sure, and then that was going to be the, the point that I would like to clarify, that we are wanting to continue. to continue a pilot program while we test these new numbers and learn new information, because there was some mention of a permanent program. When we get to permanency, we'd be considering a code change. So, yeah, with a resolution, we can extend the date and I guess I tweak those parameters that we've talked about and, and keep it going and, and explain what we'll be exploring during this new period. The last one I will note was for a year, but the first few were for six months. So some direction on what we're thinking while we do this might be good time-wise.
Okay, well, since we are waiting on some state information, my recommendation would be that we select a twelve-month time period unless there's objections from anyone else. It gives us a little bit longer time to pursue whatever our next steps are.
Yeah, it sneaks up on us really fast. I mean, the six-month time period, you know, it's like we get it done, then we turn around and we're prepping again for it. So I, I, I think, and then we had the COVID, so we ended up doing it for the twelve-month last time, Councilmember Hall, but I mean, I, I think getting it in for another twelve months would be great, that would give staff the opportunity to see where the state's going, if they've given any direction by that time and then circle back around. I, I have a quick question, Beth. This is a resolution, so it could go straight to council. No, we need to go to council, full council before we go to city council meeting, so we would need to be on a study session. Brenda, are you there? Is Brenda there? Catherine? Somebody?
That's the way it's gone in the past. It, it has gone to full council unless there's any reason why it would need to move quicker.
We have till the end of June, so if we could get on full council and then.
And we've got some meeting availability, I know, coming up, so we can.
Okay, so as long as we have, our timeline is okay with everyone and like I said, let's pursue the twelve-month unless there's any objection and I don't see anyone else's hand up, so assuming that's okay. And see, what else do you need? All good?
I think we're good, we'll get with Brenda and figure out when we can get it on full council and then we'll get it scheduled for city council as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, everyone, for your input. The only other item is miscellaneous comments. Does anyone have any comments that they would like to make at this time? Okay, I don't see any hands up, so unless there's anything else that we need to consider, I think we are ready to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate hearing your input today.
Thank you.